You're live.
Yes.
Going live.
You're live.
Okay, Billy. Billy, you want to call me?
Please do.
I don't know.
Yeah, I can make the motion extend for three minutes.
All second. All clear? Aight.
Motion accept seven minutes.
All second. All clear? Aight.
Well, I'm sorry, but I gotta be my class.
No need.
There's some of those, uh...
Yeah?
Yeah, I need to... That you have my case. Dennis, we're just not... That is all evening. You want to just tell us what things changed on your last proposal? Last meeting or... That's anything.
Uh, well, basically. We'll let... First, you go ahead. Uh, there was anyone? Go ahead. We don't have too much. A couple of things that has changed. One thing that hasn't changed is our premium. We came in with our best...
Seven one thousand one thirty-seven.
Yes, we came in with our best pricing on that. Earthquake coverage, we've talked about that. We've got the... We're able to get the deductible cut in half. So that is a five percent deductible. Again, no change of premium on that. We did get an answer on the consent to settle question and that went well above our underwriter's head on that. And it is always the best practice of selective to work as a partner with you and their legal team as well. So their duty is to protect your interests as well as theirs. So what they will do is it is situational, if you will. And as long as there is full cooperation from the insured, there is not a time that our underwriter could recall that there has been a claim settled that all parties were happy with. So, thank you. And we do have email confirmation on that if you wish to see that. Two things. Make sure as you compare, failure to supply, we talked a lot about that last year. If you bring the water in from French Lake, it's right...
So...
Potoka.
Potoka, right. If something were to happen between, you know, here and Potoka, if you were not able to supply water, natural gas, things like that, we would pay for you to have that temporarily brought in and provided. And then behind the lines, as again, you guys know how our claims team works, behind the lines, we would subrogate back on any party that we possibly could to try to get some of that claim knocked down. And lastly, we also represent EMC. And we still feel that selective is the better fit at this time. Keep an eye on shared limits. Sometimes liability limits can be shared. So if you... If they would happen to have sexual abuse, anything like that, EPLI or liability limits, just maybe make sure that it's not shared with your general liability limits. That is sometimes a difference on that. Not saying it is in this case, but we have seen that in the past. And ours are not shared, they are separate ones.
You done?
Yeah, that's the only changes, differences that we have.
Tracy, you want...
Yeah.
Whatever new changes are...
Yeah, so the premium is pretty much the same. I think they changed a little bit. Fifty-five nine seventy-seven. That does include terrorism coverage, which is an extra four hundred fifty-two dollars. I'm not sure. Is that in your current policy or not? So what that means is there's a incidence to where it's considered terrorism. If you don't have that included, it would be excluded from your policy. They wouldn't pay it fine. Liability, as far as the liability limits, there... That is changed there. Automobile. Couple of things I didn't mention last time. We... There's zero... Talk a little bit about deductibles. I think the deductible is two thousand, but there's zero blasts. Windshield busted out, there's no deductible there. All the police cars that are custom fitted are covered. The value of that is covered in the policy. And then if you happen to have two vehicles in the same accident, just had one happen down the personal line and back into each other, then both vehicles, they're only charging one deductible. So nothing major there, just... We did get our earthquake up to ten million. And wanted to confirm the deductibles on the property. It's a five thousand dollar standard deductible. But they ten thousand dollar lien held deductible. Okay? I was able to... I corrected it. I got the correct contractor equipment schedule. I was able to correct that. So all the equipment schedule, I think my limit, you mentioned the two limits. My limit's a little different because some of the things are covered under the blanket instead of on the contractor. Like your sirens, they're covered under the blanket, so they're not actually listed out in here. And I did confirm all those items are at a replacement cost basis.
Our sirens, did you say?
The sirens are under the...
The...
You got your...
Weather... Weather sirens.
Yeah, your weather sirens. They're covered under your property blanket. So you got open... You got outdoor property, you got property to open, and then you got your blanket covered. So like your playground equipment, anything within a thousand feet of a scheduled building, any outdoor property is covered under your blanket. And a big thing on your blanket is on our policy, we have what's called a prevalue. So there's no co-insurance penalty. So they're not going to come out and value everything and say you didn't have this insured to a certain amount of what it should have been and they apply penalty. It can be a... Co-insurance can be a big deal. We have a prevalue which takes away co-insurance. That will be in the event of a property claim. The other thing that you guys had a question about was rented equipment. Our limit's at fifty thousand. And they... If you... Couple of things there. If you need... If you have a piece of equipment that's over that value, they will add it on a day-to-day basis. So if you have it for five days, we can add it for five days or pay the premium for that five days. What I personally recommend, and everybody's different, but if you're renting equipment, I recommend you buy the insurance from the equipment rental company. And that way, if something happens to it, they'll take care of the issue with the damage and won't be a claim against your policy. But that's purely subjective. We can cover it or I will recommend that, so... That's about all the changes there. And I also do represent... So I actually represent selective. And there's a couple travelers, C W G, there's four or five different companies out there that insure me this. Now, we represent all of them.
Well, I have been honest with you. What we said from the very beginning, stuff close to apples, apples, we're going for lowest, most quote. And that's Tucker's, so... I mean, I hate it, you know, but last year we spent a lot more. We should have. We keep Brenda and, you know, as you already said at the beginning, we're going to go with the lowest. I don't... Unless you guys see something else that I'm not seeing. I mean, that's... To me, that's just what you gotta do, you know, it isn't tax papers mounting. What'd that turn out to, Billy?
Fifteen thousand one hundred sixty dollars.
Fifteen thousand one hundred dollars.
Ours includes work comp. Ours is bringing...
Yeah. Four thousand dollars.
Yeah. And one thing to consider, we do insure several industrial rental licenses. And buying their insurance is an option. But they can still come after you for loss of revenue. If that machine is out for repair or the manufacturer for repair, they can still come after you for loss of income, which is the money they would make having that piece of equipment. Obviously, if they can't rent out, they can't make money off that. So our coverage is covering that as well. What was the... Was it the last week? It was a ten percent deductible, right, on the earthquake?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that still...
Under term?
Yes. Okay. So we would... We have a five percent earthquake deductible at full limits. So we have a full blanket of ten million seven hundred eighteen thousand. And we are covering every penny of that. So there's not a seven hundred thousand dollar, seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollar shortfall.
That's not a total disaster.
Did I see a co-insurance on here?
Yes, we do have co-insurance. And we're more comfortable with co-insurance rather than a prevalue, simply because we don't... The three of us don't want to get into a confrontation of any type of what an item is worth. So a prevalue, that's what they're paying, that's all they're paying, if that. And that's... That's... I'm not brave enough to go that way. And we're very confident with our building figures. We came out here last year, myself and our property inspector, and had boots on the ground. And the two of us went to every single building, the sebo, the towers up there when you come into town and measure, took pictures, verified all of that rather than looking online. So we're very comfortable with those figures.
Co-insurance is an argument that's clause in an insurance contract. It's never good kind of client.
And we understand the price difference. And last year, there was a large increase. This year, we were able to get the deductibles where they're manageable, so we can eliminate that buyback. And, you know, just keep in mind that we're always on time with deadlines that you, as the board said. That way, it gives you plenty of time to make these decisions and do what's best. What was the differences? Sorry, so we keep talking.
The differences between workers' comp?
They're gonna be the same.
Yeah.
They're the same. You're in the pool right now, so Michael is getting out of the pool as quick as possible.
Yeah, I added that to Tucker's last time. I forgot to do it this time.
Oh, that's where I was.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a... Yeah. Tracy didn't show it in there, she did, I forgot that.
It's like thirty-eight hundred dollars difference.
And as far as terrorism, we have excluded that. We typically... There's one industry that we write that with. It has to be a certain dollar amount for it to be considered terrorism. And the Secretary of the Treasury is the person that determines that value. And that's not a coverage that we believe West Bay needs. You do have terrorism on your work comp, you cannot project it from that, so...
You guys know I'm local here. My name is on this in the east block. Name, I'll stand behind. Of course, if you stay with Burkhardt, you still have myself. What I've done over the years serves that right.
Tracy, is your tablet done, you just applied?
Foundation.
Billy, you just applied? Water, natural gas, those types of things.
You guys don't supply water or gas?
Yeah. No, the water comes from Springs Valley. Water district and then the gas comes from the unnatural gas.
Right. In the event that something happened at Springs Valley and you weren't able to get water in, our coverage would come in and pay for you to be able to do that, to have it brought in.
Yeah, the work comp would be the same price. In addition to that... Oh, is it safe?
You need to add that... Did you add that four thirty-five that you said to...
Didn't you say?
That's included.
That's included.
Okay.
Yes, you did. You wanted to turn away, it's a four hundred fifty dollars revenue.
Yeah.
Detective.
Okay.
Yeah. Left your idol. And what we said all along, that who's gonna take the cheapest is what it is. And so Tucker's is the cheapest, so I'm gonna make that motion. Even though it's only four thousand dollars, it's, you know, we went way over the limit the other way last year. So I'm gonna make that motion.
All second. All clear? Aight.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
All right, J C's got it all done. J C, should we print this or wait till the next reporter just to begin the print?
Say, going ahead is okay. I did have a question on one of them.
You will be hanging after it.
No, you can go unless, Jay, unless we got anything we need to say.
No, he just needs to get me an invoice. I'll do it with Marcy. There's a couple things I need to sign.
Okay.
Hey, and Eric, I want to tell you too. It's a fire grip all over and it will rain up because of... And you gotta give it. We have a wreck. Don't accept anybody's word.
No, 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 I don't do that.
Well, we had... We lost a police vehicle over somebody else that we didn't even know about, going ahead and proving what was offered to us.
Yeah.
We wouldn't have done it.
And it hurt our dog. Our dog ended up at Asher, Asher ended up dying because of that guy.
Yeah.
So everything goes to you guys.
Yeah. I don't want...
Yeah, and they settled and did everything before we even... We didn't even get there.
We even know, so...
If you guys get anything, I'll be right here. I hope she does a good job. I'll be right here.
Yes, she does.
And that last... And I tell you, our police officer went over there to help French Lake in the situation. Not our bullet. We didn't kill anybody and we ended up paying.
I tell you, sometimes...
Took the state police, took it to trial.
And one.
What he said is typical. Right, it's... I'm not gonna sit here. I told Chris, I'm not gonna tell you, they're not gonna do that, because I'd be lying.
Yeah.
I'll tell you. Don't get Satan's hand happens, but no.
They're the same money. When he said it's situational, I knew right then, when he said situational, it's gonna be whatever that insurance company decides.
But having said that, we do have some control, a little bit of say-so and help. We will back you guys. And Eric said the same.
But we're not... We're not even...
We don't want... Hey, we don't want a claim paid out either. So we're on your side.
Yeah.
You guys want a claim paid out. We don't want a claim paid out equally. So we're gonna be on your side on that.
We used to want to be held accountable for something we didn't do.
Hey, I'm looking forward to it. I know that was a tough decision.
We're guys saying we don't chicken shit. Saying we don't know chicken shit really.
You know, you're gonna be going by all that. That's fine. No, you're on there. It's good. You did good.
I said, you guys are paid on that.
No. You were the lowest bid. You deserved it.
And we, hey, we have good, we have good coverages. I, I didn't wanna, I'll be honest with you, I don't wanna always be the cheapest, I wanna be the best. And I'm not always cheapest, but I will say this, I think, did you see what your last year's premium was?
Yes, yes, that's why.
With the fifty thousand dollar deductible, I took the first, I said, why all of a sudden they're down that low? Figured out, competition, that's right, J C.
Competition holds people accountable.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
I'll be in touch.
Alright.
You'll have to be.
Mike, you can sit in the year number.
You may not want it.
That's probably more likely.
Like J C, see ya.
U S I sent three bills to the factory. One's for periodic construction observation on Hackberry Academy Road. It's for forty six hundred thirteen dollars eighty four cents.
Which is numbered up to your side of the fourteen. Okay, I got it, I got all of these, I'm with you. The invoice number, okay, so approved, alright, by J C, got it? Okay, next one, okay, J C. I got.
Next, twenty five four nine one.
Nine one, got it.
I didn't have a question for that, two fifteen thousand, two hundred and forty five dollars.
Okay. Okay, so that's good.
Now, this next one, on the.
Twenty five four ninety?
Yeah. It's at the extreme Cadillac Road, that the construction fee services, they're over the contract amount. Perhaps I was explaining to you, the contract amount for construction fee services for West Bay Springs.
That inspector, isn't it, that you guys approved? You approved that inspector to do more work when it wasn't them?
Well, no, we was out of money, and we was either gonna lose inspector, or pay the, what was it, fifteen grand?
Fifteen or twenty thousand, something like that.
To keep the inspector three days a week. So I, I don't know if that makes a difference or not.
Well, this bill's worth four thousand five hundred and thirty, that's.
That's what, Abot was here when, I think we talked about it, and, I mean, we needed inspector out there. Okay, so I approve all of them.
Okay, got it. So we have got it. Turn it down.
It's what you wanna do.
All three, all three please. And save the invoice numbers. And just save that amount, and then I'll put it in the minutes, okay?
I'll make a motion to approve invoice number twenty five four nine one for U S I Consultants for fifteen thousand two hundred and forty five dollars.
Same.
I'll do it.
Now, do them all three at the same time, and then, do, just do that.
I'll do it too now.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve invoice at twenty five four ninety, um, for U S I Consultants for four thousand five hundred and forty three dollars.
Okay, and?
And also make a motion to approve invoice number twenty five five fourteen for U S I Consultants for four thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty four cents.
Very good, thank you.
I'll do it. Sorry, you should turn me off on that.
That's alright, you did well, got it done, that's all that matters. Okay, thank you, get that to J C. Where do you want them?
I've already got a copy, so you want this?
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I have a bill from land improvement, probably needs his money for two hundred seventy eight thousand five hundred, it's FEMA, so.
Should I, uh, I guess, J C, should, should I go ahead and email our representative from FEMA and tell him that our temporary repair is now complete, and so they didn't know, I don't think they need to know anything, or they don't act like they need to come look, but. And yeah, and we've paid the invoice, so.
So I'm going to copy that invoice, copy the check, and send it to him.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve invoice, uh, eight six eight seven nine six for land improvement solutions for the FEMA repair for Hobbit Drive in the amount of two hundred and seventy eight thousand five hundred dollars.
I see it.
A little better?
Alright.
Once it come out, what we pay once, two?
Seventy five percent, they're gonna pick, we're gonna, they're gonna pay seventy five, we're gonna pick out twenty five.
Hopefully, Goose, I don't know if you, hopefully we should, uh, be looking for our check, hopefully for the Inwood Avenue, cause you saw we.
We sent all that in.
Yeah, well, and we just, I think it was last week, I, we got sent something on that, that Green's portal to approve their.
You did.
Cause it showed our breakdown, they were gonna pay nine thousand something, ours was like two thousand, so.
That's awesome.
Hopefully this will speak up a two.
Sixty nine thousand.
Yeah, that's the ours, that's the one.
Hopefully, yeah.
Oh, that's right, if this week could ever get this run.
Seventy thousand, so it's two seventy eight, so that's.
Spend a fortune on that, right?
Save this.
Basically two hundred and ten thousand.
Two hundred and ten thousand for Christmas decorations.
No, not until the tears come on, China's got to play fair.
And okay, Dave really did great, he thought out of the box on how we're gonna try to make the, you know, make the best repair for us to get us by, and I, I think we're all pretty confident that it's gonna work really good. His guys did a fantastic job.
Land improvement, that's excellent work.
They worked hard.
He's got a good crew.
Yep.
Okay, I only have one more, it's, uh, Ace for sixty nine thirteen, and that is for all the aluminum fencing up at the park, and it looks really good.
So as now, except for the one end of the basketball court, we're pretty well done with fencing.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the Ace Fence Company for the continued fencing up the park for six thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars.
Same.
A little better? Uh.
Okay. Now, I didn't bring that sod, uh, in, John, I gave, put it in your box.
Yeah.
Hold on that, for seventy eight hundred.
Joey had taken, uh.
Thank you.
W W Construction, is that, that's his, that, thank you, double, double, up there to look at Brent Pinnix, and we told him we'd fix along his wall, but it come out like, back seventy hundred dollars, so I was thinking it's too much to.
For sodding and.
You know, the thing about this, we can.
Just solid doing it.
Well, you gotta fill, yeah, you gotta fill the whole thing in dirt that's falling down in the wall there, and then you need to put sod on top of it, which I think we're better off just seed and straw, and there's no way you get water on that. But, uh, you know, we still got some good dirt, we can probably get over to park. Every time we increase that lower parking lot, we get a bunch of good dirt, so, you know, Joey and guys can, you know, they took that little.
You got the equipment in there.
Yeah, so we can, they can do that.
But our street department did a good job, saved some money, like it.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go over sometime this week, I'm gonna go over there and just play what we need. Color, I guess, gotta be gold and the black.
Yeah, it's gonna match.
Soft black top, and I went up there and measured all that, and they probably need a sixteen D by twenty Y, and just a roll-up roster, and I think that will be the ball, or everything they need to store in there. I measured the golf cart and all that other stuff, so.
And where he's gonna put it, um, it's a good location.
Yeah, I'm gonna put it, well, if you guys agree with this, we'll put it, know where the basketball court is, and we got that telephone pole over here, west of, it'll fit almost perfect, you know, right into that area there, and then we're really just across the parking lot from where they work the foam, you know.
Handy, it'll be handy there, it's always dry.
We'll, we'll, yeah, when we get ready to deliver it, whatever, but I'll, I will get some prices, and I'll let the guy know, I'll get right back with him then, once I'm clear with you guys.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, since this was just a special meeting, you guys. Love it. Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn, I'll send.
I'll do it.
Uh. So do you know when he's coming tomorrow, like, what time do you, what time do you open? Eight thirty, but okay, I'll just have to run the show. Hey, I'm gonna write three checks, I gotta add U S I, gotta add those, I'm gonna add treatment, and, and, okay, good?
I'm just waiting for it, that way you know.
Yes, you're just gonna wait, I'll do it. Awesome.